Okay, good evening, everyone. If I could ask you to please stand for the National Anthem. Okay, thank you, and good evening and welcome to all members of council, staff, and members of the public. This is our meeting of Monday, November 22, 2021. I'll call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none, except the agenda, I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councillor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Clangary accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, November 22, 2021. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to adoption of the minutes, I have a motion moved by Councillor Massey, seconded by Councillor Noble, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated regular meeting of council, November 8, 2021. Any discussion on the minutes?
Just one item, thank you. Number nine under new business, it should be the Maxwell and District Horticultural Society. It's written Cultural Society, so that should be corrected.
Under number nine. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So as amended, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to delegations, we have the roads need study, Alex Siciliano from McIntosh and Perry.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everybody can hear and see me okay. Alex Siciliano from McIntosh Perry, I'm joined by my colleagues Ted Phillips, who's actually showing up under my name there in the top of the screen, but that's Ted, I assure you, and Sarah Cowie, who's also joined viewing as a regular participant. So I'm going to go ahead and jump into the presentation itself if I can get the screen share up and running. Is that working for everybody?
Yes, it's working, Alex.
Okay, fantastic. So just firstly, wanted to maybe give a little brief introduction. Alex Siciliano from McIntosh Perry worked with the township in preparing the 2021 Road Needs Study. I mentioned I'm joined with Ted. I don't know if you wanted to give a little background on yourself, Ted. Worked on the appraisal side of things, a resident pavement expert, so to speak, so you can give him a few minutes just to give a brief introduction if you'd like, Ted.
Yeah, certainly. Can you hear me, everyone?
Can.
Yes, okay. Ted Phillips with McIntosh Perry. For 34 years, I was with Eastern Region MTO and the last, oh, I guess it was 12 years, I was the geotechnical engineering supervisor, so I had your 7,000 lane kilometres of provincial highways in eastern Ontario to keep in a reasonable shape for you folks. And then in 2012, I retired and moved on to McIntosh Perry, starting up, I guess, a division that did similar work to what I did with the ministry. I had the privilege of working with your roads foreman and with Mike, your supervisor, doing these road assessments, and we had lots of really good technical discussions about oh, treatments and what we could do to improve the network. And I think I passed that on to Alex and Sarah for their information, but I'm here if there's any, I guess, technical questions that I could help with. And I know we did a little session also with your with your foreman Tara, who was with you at the time, and Mike and the foreman, just going over some of the technical aspects of what we saw also, so that said, I guess the only other thing, born and raised in southwestern Ontario in Oxford County, so I'm well aware of the importance of a rural agricultural area and the road network to the economy of such an area. And as I said, it was a pleasure to be able to work with your staff on this. So thanks, Alex.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Ted. So as Ted mentioned, he's here for any nitty gritty kind of technical questions as they may arise, although we typically like to just skip them over those for presentation purposes, but as you mentioned, looked after the assessment and more of the technical aspects, then passing over to myself and Sarah on the design side of things and the asset management planning portion of the report is what we looked after, and that's what we're hoping to present to you here today and generate any discussion as is necessary. So just a little background on why this type of study was initiated and some of the intended benefits. Starting with informing council on existing conditions and needs of the road system. This is based on summary of assessments completed for each road segment in the field. Then to develop a cost-effective construction schedule within current proposed budgetary limitations. This is with a primary focus on timely rehabilitation to address the needs of road segments based on the current stage in their lifecycle. We then provide a projection of future adequacy of the road system through forecast condition ratings for all segments of the network. Provide a suggested yearly work plan and budget in the form of a 10-year capital plan in cases where the current budget for roads is maintained, as well as in the event additional funds become available. And finally, present the recommendations on areas for improvement and recommendations on where additional funds can be allocated if and when they become available. Some of the benefits of undertaking this kind of study are roads recommended for rehabilitation can be prioritized systematically, we like to say, based on their needs, observations from condition assessments, and input from town staff, which ensures limited funds are allocated to the most cost-effective projects. Having a roadmap saves time in formulating a program for each year by establishing expectations and forecast budgets for a 10-year period. Reviewing the network periodically also provides justification where shifting priorities becomes necessary to address spending shortfalls. This is achieved through implementing a more robust maintenance strategy for rehabilitation efforts, while also establishing a reserve fund for larger infrastructure replacements when necessary. So I typically like to start off these types of presentations showing this figure. So this is from the Ministry of Infrastructure's Guide for Municipal Asset Management, which basically sums up the intent of the approach we've taken in prioritizing rehabilitation and maintenance efforts in the study. The figure shows two ways which any asset can be managed. One noted in grey as poor asset management, and the other smart asset management in more of a burgundy colour. For comparison purposes, both options start at the same condition rating in year zero, representing newly constructed assets, and then shows how the condition of each progresses over an anticipated life cycle of 65 years. So the poor asset management option, again shown in grey, essentially allows the asset to deteriorate through regular use over the first stage of its lifecycle, shown through a fairly steep decline in its condition until it needs to be reconstructed in year 30. Reconstruction then raises its condition back to that when it was first constructed through a sizable allocation of capital, which point the asset is subject to similar use over the second stage of its lifecycle with no further rehabilitation until it ultimately needs to be reconstructed again at the end of the 65-year period. Conversely, the smart asset management example shows timely rehabilitation with periodic maintenance at regular intervals throughout its life. Deterioration with regular use is still evident through a decline in condition, however, small investments are accompanied by incremental increases in condition, which help mitigate steep decline as shown in the other option. Comparing the two assets at the end of their 65-year lifecycle, we can see that a comparison in $60 million hypothetically invested in reconstruction for option one leaves the asset in need of replacement, while only $40 million invested in maintenance for option two results in the asset having considerably higher condition and extended service life. So obviously, this is just an example, but essentially sums up the approach to asset management and what we aim to achieve in the plan presented in this case for municipal roads. So starting with a summary of the report contents, hoping everybody has had a chance to review, at least briefly, I know it's a little bit long, and there's quite a bit of technical information in there, but the report starts with an introduction of an overview and much of the same background info I just touched on with regards to the approach to asset management. Next are details on the study methodology, which we'll also get into as part of this presentation. Then we present the approach to benchmark costing used to estimate anticipated expenditures for various maintenance and rehabilitation works. We present the conclusions from the field investigations completed as part of the study, including some key observations related to the current state of infrastructure and typical distresses. I present options for pavement preservation strategies, along with examples for conventional approaches, as well as new innovations to pavement preservation that may be considered. Then we discuss the renewal and reconstruction strategy a little bit more detail, which point we move away from the more technical portions of the report into the next section, which presents the current capital spending and future forecast budgets based on historical figures, which culminates in the ultimate renewal strategy that takes into account anticipated budgets in the form of the 10-year capital plans. And then finally, it's wrapped up with summary and conclusions, as well as some recommendations on next steps. In terms of the methodology, the first step taken at the onset of the study was to initiate an inventory, the existing road system. So this consisted of Ted driving every loose top and hard surface road in the township to assess its existing condition, taking into account current condition of the surface and road base, ride quality, number and severity of distresses, drainage, and a number of other things to assign each segment a condition rating, which are on a scale of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest, essentially reserved to denote newly constructed roads. And one obviously being the lowest, although typically hard surface roads are the minimum rating for hard surface road would be three, whereas one and two are usually reserved for those considered to be a safety hazard or risk to the travelling public, for which I'm happy to report we did not have any. Next, the renewal options are selected and typically consist of standard approaches to maintenance and rehabilitation, but also may include some additional options depending on what may be available through area contractors. Benchmark costing is then developed to assign anticipated per kilometre costs for each of the above noted renewal options. Capital costs are determined based on historical spending and forecast capital budgets, and finally, the 10-year program can be developed. In this case, we actually went one step further and prepared three 10-year plans. The first considers current forecast budgetary limitations as would be standard for this type of study, whereas the additional plans consider the potential for additional funds to be made available with what's referred to in the study as maintenance plan, which aims to maintain the network at its current 2021 condition rating. And then the gold standard, so to speak, which we refer to as the optimization plan, which improves the network overall average condition rating to what can be considered optimal for hard surface. Starting with the inventory, as I mentioned, all roads were reviewed in the field and assigned a condition rating from 1 to 10. This table here just provides some general commentary on each range, so anything from eight to 10 has good structural condition with only very minor local improvements needed, if any. Five to seven represents an average structural condition with continued improvement needed to prevent further deterioration. And finally, a rating less than five is indicative of poor structural condition for which more substantial improvements are needed. So using the 2021 condition ratings, we're able to forecast the condition rating of the overall network based on anticipated rates of deterioration, which in this case are shown here, 0.23 points per year for asphalt and 0.47 points per year for surface treated. Save some of the background on the calculation there, main difference being that surface treated are generally more susceptible to deterioration, have a lower overall anticipated service life when compared to asphalt. There are some, of course, some other factors that have an effect on deterioration over time, primarily traffic volumes, percentage of heavy vehicles and farm equipment, but generally gives a guideline on what can be expected to generate the anticipated average over the whole network for the 10-year study period. So here we see the condition of the current road network based on the 2021 appraisals broken down by surface type. For comparison purposes, the 2021 ratings are accompanied by the condition ratings observed during the last appraisal on 2016, which McIntosh Perry also prepared, myself and Ted were involved in. And then furthest on the right are the condition ratings that are considered to be optimal for each surface type. So what we can kind of see from this comparison is that the township's gravel roads, which actually represent over half, 55% of the overall network, are generally well-maintained, save an average condition rating in the range of what's considered optimal. The remaining hard surface roads seen a nominal increase in condition rating when compared to 2016 values, which indicates a successful maintenance and reconstruction strategy has been applied over the five-year period since the last study, however, ratings are still lower than what's kind of considered the optimal range again for each surface type, which suggests additional improvements can be made. In general, average ratings moving closer to or below five is likely to result in a noticeable decrease in level of service. And we're doing quite a bit better than that here, but still something that we can work on in terms of additional maintenance and rehabilitation. So this may be a little hard to see on the presentation in any detail, but I'm hoping everybody was provided a hard copy. It may be easier to refer to that if necessary. And we'll also be providing full-size plans after the fact, but essentially what we see here is a visual representation of findings from the 2021 appraisals in the form of color-coded map of the township network. So roads in orange are considered to be deficient based on having a rating of less than five, as we talked about kind of being threshold versus those with suitable condition shown in green. So with this, the main focus was just to identify particular areas to focus on and see if we can't make some improvements just on a geographic basis to start. Here we show the condition ratings broken down further by service type. This one's starting with gravel roads. So the chart summarizes the overall percentage of roads based on their existing condition. Very poor representing condition rating equal or less than two. Poor is three to four, fair, five to six, good, seven to eight, and finally, excellent, anything greater than eight. So we can see that 62% of loose top gravel roads have a condition rating greater than six, which suggests the township's gravel roads are generally well-maintained, as was noted earlier. Using the same scale for surface-treated roads, we see that more of a shift towards the fair and good, but overall, 83% of the surface-treated roads have a condition rating of five or greater, which suggests that the township's low-class bituminous roads are generally well-maintained as well. Next, we have asphalt roads specifically on this chart, those in a rural setting, which is skewed slightly to the lower end of the spectrum, showing 62% of roads with a condition rating less than the desired optimum range. And finally, for asphalt, asphalt roads in an urban setting, seemingly a little more evenly dispersed across each category, but still showing 63% of roads with a condition rating less than the desired optimum. So to address the deficiencies that we observed, next step is to put together a plan for capital improvements. So as we know, various improvements can vary significantly in cost, so the first step in determining what can be implemented is to prepare an estimate of what the associated cost may be. So in this case, the estimated cost for identified improvements to the road network were calculated on an approximate basis using average benchmark costs for various items, as are shown in the table on the screen here. Costs were averaged based on unit rates obtained locally, along with industry standard rates based on recent construction contracts. And these costs were then repurposed essentially to develop unit rates on a per kilometre benchmark cost basis for various construction types. So starting with the surface-treated roadways, reconstruction strategies are shown here on the screen, consisting first of resurfacing, which consists of a single surface treatment overlay. Moving on to partial depth reconstruction, which includes partial depth pulverizing, granular placement, double surface treatment, spot drainage improvements, and estimated culvert replacement. Finally, full-depth reconstruction, which includes earth excavation, full replacement of the road structure, and double surface treatment, which also includes an allowance for geotechnical investigation and engineering. Is this a little bit more in-depth reconstruction process? So as can be expected, costs increase significantly with more involved rehabilitation strategies. Full-depth reconstruction being the most cost-intensive. For asphalt roads, starting with those in an urban setting, we have resurfacing in the case of asphalt, including a single surface overlay, then moving up to partial depth, referred to as pulverize and pave in this case, which includes pulverizing the existing surface, addition of granular A, single lift of asphalt, as well as shouldering spot drainage improvements and select color replacements. And again, full-depth reconstruction, which includes excavation and full replacement of the road structure, followed by asphalt paving. And again, we've also included the allowance for geotechnical investigations and engineer. With asphalt roads, we also have the opportunity to consider some lower-cost maintenance activities along with the rehabilitation options, namely routing and sealing of surface cracks, which aims to prevent further deterioration and rejuvenating oil, which aims to improve plasticity of aged asphalt, which tends to get more brittle essentially when as they age and can be subject to increased distresses. Much in the same for urban, excuse me, semi-urban roads. Noted increase in cost for rehabilitation options to account for additional work required in these settings, such as driveway tie-ins, culvert replacements, and adjustments of catch faces and manholes. And the same story for urban roads. The main difference in this case being the inability to perform asphalt overlays without first milling to match the existing curb line, as well as general requirement for two lifts of asphalt to be placed to account for increased traffic volume results in slightly inflated costs when compared to rural and semi-urban roads. This slide just presents some commentary and additional considerations that were taken into account when selecting road segments to be rehabilitated when preparing this strategy for renewal. In the likely event that there are more roads requiring attention than the budget allows. So the first bullet, starting with lifecycle costs, which essentially suggests a hierarchy in terms of which rehabilitation options should be prioritized when considering extension to service life when compared to capital cost. General rule of thumb being that cost benefit decreases as you go up the spectrum from maintenance to reconstruction activities. That said, there are certainly examples where there's little to no choice in having to recommend more costly measures based on a given road's current condition. So certainly, exceptions apply. But that's generally what we try to stick to. Next consideration is prioritizing roads based on traffic volumes, which is pretty self-explanatory. All other factors being equal, a main road servicing large number of vehicles can be considered a higher priority when compared to one serving only a few. And finally, proximity of road segments, which essentially takes the opportunity to rehabilitate a given segment on the same timeframe as those in the same area, with the aim and goal being to achieve potential economies of scale in procurement, as well as isolating disruptions within the road network in a given construction season. So here we shift from more of the technical portion of the study into discussion on budgets. So starting with historical capital spending based on budgets for the roads from 2016 through to 2020, we can see that the budgets were fairly consistent. And we're given loose direction that the future budgeting could be estimated based on historic value, so we've anticipated maintaining an average annual budget of approximately 1.3 million based on these historical figures. The second bullet and accompanying tables shows the forecast budgets, which are based on the proposed rehabilitation and reconstruction schedule shown in the 10-year plan, which is detailed in the report. And also present forecast budgets, like I said, for the 10-year period. Something to note in particular is you're showing budgets lower than the average. Consider carrying the remainder in a reserve to allow increased spending in future years, so yearly spending may fluctuate. But overall average over the 10-year period has been maintained right around that 1.3 million mark. So here we have another map, which again, might be a little tricky to see, but essentially is a visual representation of the planned road rehabilitation throughout the network over the 10-year study period. Each colour represents a different year for construction again. Would welcome everyone to refer to the report itself as the maps may be a little bit easier to see, but is also accompanied by a table which outlines the segments along with proposed rehabilitation strategies and costs by year. So to evaluate the effectiveness of the 10-year plan over the study period, we've plotted the forecast condition ratings for surface treated asphalt roads indicated here by the solid lines, as well as the overall average weighted weighted average condition ratings for a do-nothing option, as can be shown by the dash lines. So we can see that when looking at hard surface roads, there's going to be a slight decrease in condition rating for both surface types, as can be expected, but both are vastly improved when compared to the do-nothing options, so it's a good sign there. That said, obviously, a decrease in the overall average, however slight, indicates that additional measures can be taken to maintain and improve the network, which led us to developing the maintenance and optimization plans I touched on at the beginning of the presentation. So here we see the effects of increased spending on roads, namely under the proposed maintenance and optimization plans. Again, we show the do-nothing option just for comparison purposes, but the real focus here is the baseline capital plan, which shows a moderate decrease in overall average condition rating in orange, as we talked about on the last slide, versus the maintenance plan in green, which maintains the overall average condition rating over the 10-year period. And then finally, the optimization plan in yellow, which actually incrementally improves the condition rating of of the overall road network to achieve an optimal rating by the end of the study period. And just for reference purposes, 6.5 to 7 is generally considered to be the blended average for hard surface roads for the township's road network. So to come back to the financial considerations of the three proposed plans, the baseline capital plan, as I mentioned, maintains the current budget at 1.3 million average annual. Moving up to the supplemental plans we prepared, it's estimated that approximately 1.7 million per year would be required in order to maintain the current condition rating, whereas 2.7 million per year would be required to achieve an optimal condition rating. So the broad conclusion from this shortfall that's been identified is that the municipality's roads are currently underfunded as compared to what's required to achieve an optimal rating for the whole network. Now, we can't necessarily comment on the inferred shortfall or financing much further, as this is obviously a bit more of an accounting exercise, but can suggest that any surplus in the road budget or sources of outside funding for infrastructure can be allocated to additional maintenance and rehabilitation when possible. And the idea of the supplementary plans presented in the report is to provide further direction on how to allocate additional funds if or when they become available. So to wrap things up in terms of the recommendations, we sort of summed up a few action items that can be taken to help reduce the risks associated with underfunding, so first being to adopt the 10-year capital plan for road reconstruction as presented. Next, to be would be to complete additional works listed in the supplemental plans as more funds become available, either through additional funding sources or outside funding applications and that type of thing. And then to continue regular monitoring and evaluating. And then to continue regular monitoring and evaluation of roads, both condition and ongoing use. Few things that can be done would be more extensive geotechnical investigations and testing to get a little bit more of a peak to what's happening in the base of the road and then an enhanced traffic data collection program. To better understand typical usage and potential areas of focus. And that essentially concludes the presentation. So I'm not sure what sort of time is allocated there, but we're right at the 7:30 mark. Any extra time though, happy to open things up for questions or comments if anybody has anything.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Are there any questions from members of council, Councilor Noble?
Hi, it's Councilor Noble. I just had a quick question. I think you touched on it. I just want to be sure. 6.0 seems to be an optimal level for hard surfaces. And well, for any services for some of them, but I'm curious. Is there a threshold where we become liable or does it just mean more complaints?
Generally speaking, at five, five is what we consider where we might expect there to be some more complaints. Liability, again, this is it's fairly. It's not an exact science, but in the one and two is where we'd expect a road to be recommended to be closed due to safety and operational concerns, but generally speaking, it's the type of thing where it's not going to be terribly unsafe to drive, just not going to be terribly enjoyable either.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, please, about a surface treated or gravel versus surface treated versus asphalt. It appears to me our gravel roads appear to be better in the last couple of years than they were previously. Because I remember we had lengthy conversations around the council table about thinking we might need to consider surface treating more roads or paving more roads. But now it looks like our gravel roads are being better maintained. And it looks like our surface treated roads are in bad shape. However, over the last number of years, we've had problems with our newly surface treated roads and that they haven't lasted. As well as the surface treated roads that were done five, 10, 15 years ago. You and then I've also noticed that in this report that our asphalt roads appear not to be as well maintained. And I take it that's just because it just because of the cost of them. And so it's easier to invest in surface treated. And keep those up to par than it is, it's harder to to re-ashault them. So I'm just wondering if you have some comments on that with regards to where we should be putting our money.
Yeah, you definitely touched on some major considerations there. I guess just to backtrack a little bit to some of the roads that may have been upgraded in the past. In talking with Ted and he may want to chime in here and elaborate a little bit, but it sounds like you also as much as it's related to to maintenance, it's also kind of up against the elements. In that some of the material that might be available out there for construction may not be the best. And on top of that, some of the existing roads that are gravel might not have a suitable base to necessarily have been upgraded in the past. This is not something you know, just by looking at it typically, you get to the bottom of it by doing a little bit more enhanced investigations, but I guess the the moral of the story is just to ensure if if there are going to be discussions on upgrading or changing a service type, it's imperative to ensure that the roads selected are good candidates based on their existing condition. And underlying base structure and to rule out any surprises by doing a little bit more investigations beforehand.
Okay, thank you. I think we missed the crux of what you were saying at that one. You froze at one point, so.
Oh, shoot. Sorry about that.
Are there any further questions or comments from members of council? Councilman Manley.
Just maybe just a question for Ted, as he probably sees a lot of this, just wondering if if he has seen in his travels. A deterioration or not deterioration, but a a change in in surface treatment over the the past, say, five years as far as the quality.
Interesting question. Do you have a little bit more, when you're speaking about the quality, are we talking about like I've worked with your roads people back. I don't have the date here. I think it was about three years ago. I know there was some issues on concession road two east of Apple Hill. But those those were clearly related to the probably the base materials and even the the material underneath. Are we speaking here of sort of settlement or deterioration of the road or are you talking about just like the aggregate isn't lasting as well and
Well, we're ending up with pot, like we say, two years ago. We surface treated a road and we've got potholes on that road already. That they're patching.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I know and I'm not sure how much time we have here because I love to go on about this stuff, but but I did have a really good conversation with with your with your roads people that I do think a number of your roads. You've probably inherited some long ago issues with the materials that were built in a lot of your roads. And I know I went over with your staff, the fact that now I don't have this right in front of me, but in Canyon. I think your your materials there are probably fairly highly frost susceptible and then in Laheal, it's more perhaps flatter and not draining as well, but either way. You're susceptible to some frost issues that are probably enhanced by some of the original materials that were that were placed in in your road beds. I know Mike showed me the road there out by his place. I'm sorry, the name is going to escape me here just for for a second, but there was River Road that was just overlaid or repaved in 2020 and you've ended up with longitudinal meander crack in that 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 is typically like a a deeper seated issue. So so my my recommendation is is I think I think your surface treated roads could use consideration of five, six years in, they should be getting at least another single over top, but I also think that they should be using the expertise of your people to to probably go and and find some of the known frosty, poor performing areas and probably doing some digouts on those before you actually spend any more money on the surface treatment. That's long story short, as I say.
That helps. Thanks, Ted.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I thank you gentlemen for your presentation and thank you for your report. Looks like we have a roadmap for 10 years of construction coming up and we're going to have to dig down a little bit deeper to bring our roads up. So it's very good content. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to staff reports, Community Services Department. Award of Contract for the Glengarry Sports Palace Executive or sorry evaporative evaporative condenser replacement. I have a motion moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Councilman Manley. The council receives staff report number CS 2021-35. And that council approves the award of the contract for Glengarry Sports Palace Evaporative Condenser Replacement. In the amount of $75,000 plus HST to Simco Refrigeration. And that council approves the additional funds of $25,000 be used for modifications to the roof line. And the installation of the condenser support stand. And that the chief administrative officer and the director of community services are hereby authorized to execute the documentation relevant to this project. Welcome in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So council will recall that we came to council to ask for a pre-approval of the 2022 capital budget. In the order of $100,000 to be able to go to tender for the evaporative condenser for the Glengarry Sports Palace. We were fortunate that at the non-mandatory pre-bid meeting, two contractors showed up to evaluate the work that had to be done. And of that, we did receive one submission from Simco. And I'm pleased to report that the cost of the condenser is identical to the cost of the condenser that we placed in Maxville in 2018. So given the high level of inflation that we've received, I was really pleased to see that number come in that low. The rest of the funds will be used to put a standalone stand. Presently, the condenser is on the roof of the shop and we get ice buildup every year, every winter. And having a standalone for a stand for the condenser to stand alone will stop that from happening and reduce the expenses and the repairs on the condenser. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to the Treasury Department, scale of cost for tax sale. I have a motion moved by Councilor Manley, seconded by Councilor Madden. That the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 50-2021 being a bylaw to establish scale of costs in relation to property tax sales. And that bylaw 50-2021 be read a first, second and third time enacted in open council this 22nd day of November 2021. Welcome, Kim.
Good evening. Charges associated with the administration of tax sale processes are called costs. The Municipal Act 2001 provides a variety of ways to calculate or determine the cost component of the cancellation price for this registration process. Only costs actually incurred through the registration process are actually put on the tax roll associated with the property that will be sold. Section 385 of the Municipal Act provides municipalities to fix a scale of cost to be charged as reasonable costs. Currently, the township uses a company called REIT RealTax to assist with the sale of Taxil. Including administering the proper documentation, there's title searches that need to be done. You have to have correct timelines, correct notices. These are on a set fee basis. And Schedule A attached to the bylaw are the 2022 scheduled costs associated. This bylaw provides transparency to ratepayers of the potential additional costs that will be incurred to a property should it be registered. It's it's not clear necessarily that it's going to cost an additional 3,500 to $4,000 worth of costs. Will be added to a person's property if it has to go through the registration and tax sale process. However, when that property is sold, those costs are recovered from the person purchasing the property. So basically, it only affects the property that is registered and it's going to be sailed and it's fully recoverable. But this just gives some transparency to the public that there are additional costs when your property does get registered. And it's up to like 3,500 to $4,000.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Moving on to Planning and Bylaw Enforcement Department, Zoning Amendment Bylaw Z 142021, I have a motion moved by Councilor Madden. Seconded by Councilor Wensing, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts zoning bylaw Z 142021 and that bylaw Z 142021 be read a first, second and third time. And adopted in open council on November 22, 2021. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you will recall, at our last meeting, we had a planning meeting on November 8. I presented a zoning bylaw amendment for Mrs. Mary Le Duke on at 1291 Carr Road 34 in Dalkeith. This was typical flag law creation. So as the official plan. The counties, we have to do a zoning amendment to, in this case, to prohibit residential development on the retained portion. And we had to do a zoning amendment to prohibit agricultural development on the severed lands and to acknowledge the shortage in frontage for that property. So we received no additional comments and there was no question at the previous meeting.
Thank you, Jacob. Any questions or comments for Jacob? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to Public Works Department Contract Extension Disposal Service Agreement, GFL. I have a motion moved by Councilor Wensing, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams. The council approves the contract extension with Green for Life Environmental, GFL, for a one-year term. From December 2, 2021 to December 1, 2022. And that council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute the contract extension documents.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking on behalf of the Public Works Department this evening. So this is something that was left over from the summer. So our hope was to negotiate a brand new contract with GFL. But they're not in the position right now to redo the contract. Council will see within the documents that are provided that it's a very old contract. I did review it. There's nothing in there that's very alarming. It's a standard contract to, you know, take the garbage there. So what staff is recommending for now is to do the one-year extension as GFL has requested. And that we'll endeavor in the beginning of 222 to redo the contract with them for a longer period of time, obviously.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does this contract play in with the regional waste management study that's undergoing at the moment at the counties?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, there is also Seth Glengarry just had to do the same thing as well with the collection. So the regional waste management, I believe, is being presented in the spring time of 222. So we will certainly get that report and bring it forth to county council as well as the lower tiers. This won't affect it. The only thing that we were sort of hoping that is in the recommendation, not to have the spoiler alert, but is that, you know, we all have garbage and that perhaps when if we all go together on some of these contracts, we may have a better bargaining power. With companies like GFL, even though there's not a lot of options out there. So and that also that the contracts that are done, whether it be for now collection, some municipalities within the lower tiers collect their own garbage and recycling, we do not. But that some of those contracts could be standardized as well as brought together again for that economies of scale. So unfortunately, we are in a position where we need to renew with GFL for now. But it's it's certainly something that is included in the waste management or in the regional waste management strategy that we start to come together on some of these contracts.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. You said they're not in a position to renew us right now. It's on their end. What's, do we have any indication of what's going on?
I believe through Mr. Mayor, it's a it's a change in staffing. So they're redoing a bunch of these contracts and they didn't have a standardized contract yet for us. Certainly, we could have taken the lead on it and prepared our own contract that's very counterintuitive to what we would normally do. It's on the vendor to do that for us, as well as it would cost us money to do that through a lawyer. So rather than do that, we were satisfied with what's here. There's standard liability clauses that have been here there for the last 20 years. Certainly, they have insurance, you know, we do have those insurance documents on on hand, so that would be the biggest thing. But I think one of the main issues is that we want to continue to be able to take our garbage to GFL, so we need to be able to renew this. But it was just a staffing thing. We did, certainly the previous director Tara and I were pushing to get the new draft out. But they were dragging their feet. So unfortunately, they wanted us to do the extension for now. But we'll have a whole year to really push the issue because there's not going to be another extension available from my desk for sure, so.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to B or to two municipal drain request, east part of Lot 27. Concession 8, former township of Laheal in the township of North Glengarry, have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry directs staff to draft a mutual drain agreement with the owner of the east part of Lot 27, Concession 8.
So I'll just introduce it, Mr. Mayor, and then Dean's going to assist me in sort of explaining as well some of the details. So council, remember that staff brought this to your attention in September. It was decided then, there were some questions that we weren't in the position to answer at that time. We certainly have taken that time over the last couple of months to do some research. As well as to answer many, many questions that have come across our desks over the last two months. So just to give a bit of background, as you're aware. We are looking to do a mutual drain agreement with a proponent. We have included in the package a draft which we received from the city of Ottawa. Now, we've had some some recommendations for additions to the agreement and certain certainly we are open to adding those suggestions. As well as this agreement would be reviewed by our insurance as well as a lawyer if if council felt that was needed. I do think there's a good basis here for the agreement. And again, like I said, there were some recommendations that we certainly will take into consideration. I may open it up to Dean at this point to provide to you. I may open it up to Dean at this point to provide to you some background and some of the information that we've, you know, found out in the last two months.
Yeah, so as you all know, this has been ongoing for a long time. We fielded a lot of calls, we've made a lot of calls, we've reached out to a lot of professionals that have been in this for many, many years. We've had them on site looking at it, and it was actually one of the engineers that suggested we come up with this. And this agreement will have the new owner of this land pay for all the costs associated to perform this work, and there'll be stipulations in the contract to follow. So we think this is the best option going forward with this.
Okay, questions? Questions from members of council? Councillor Noble?
I didn't have to do the hum. So just have a couple of comments. I'm not sure if some of these are going to be rhetorical questions or if they're actual question questions. I was made aware that there are a couple of pipes that run north and south under the road allowance that have been there at least 25 years. So we're assuming they're going to be in the way of construction. Again, you don't have to answer it now if you don't have to answer right away, but have we confirmed the depth of location of any of these pipes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I have, actually, I haven't seen that pipe. It's underground, so there's no way of seeing it. Whether the elevation is going to be close to where they're going to come through, I don't know.
Okay. Sarah, go ahead.
However, I do know there will be locates done prior to construction, so there would be no risk to do any damage to any infrastructure that's in the ground, for sure.
Okay. What else is in here? Yeah, do we have a copy of the drainage design to confirm that the plan was always to connect to this municipal drain, the one on Old Military, as opposed to heading up to Alakinbar?
I have not seen that one.
Okay. Questions? Questions? Right now, just the comment that number one consideration of a drainage design is usually the sufficient outlet, so we're just curious why this wasn't the main thing. And are we certain that there is not an incline, that there is a decline, that there is the the fall? Because generally, when you stand at the bush and you look that way, you look up.
The owner of that land has had it surveyed, and there's almost three and a half feet of fall from his outlet to the culvert.
Okay, and we're, okay, so obviously, I guess we're sure about that, then? Okay. The fall, and then I guess the same question would apply as far as locates, because the natural gas line runs on one side of Old Military, and then the Bell lines run on the other side of Military. Do we know what the, is there a certain, like, when you're building a ditch along Old Military, for example, do you have to do right beside, or do we have enough road allowance?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's really none of our concern.
Okay, so those things don't have to be in this agreement before we agree to it?
It'd be up to the contractor to ensure all the locates are properly followed.
Okay, and so to agree to build a drain, but then if there's issues, we can unagree to build the drain, or how does that work? Like, if we run into too many issues?
What kind of issues, like with the gas line?
Well, like, I'm thinking of those two pipes, if they're directly in the way of construction, if we get to Enbridge and they said, yeah, you're not touching our road allowance, or if you get to the Bell locates and they said, you are not touching our road allowance, like, if we can't actually build somewhere, you can't come in so far? I'm just curious, like, when we run into issues, does the agreement fall apart at any point?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's really none of our concern.
Okay.
The locates, I'll have to adhere to what the locates, what Enbridge has asked, what the Bell line asked, what fiber optic, they have to stay away so much, it's.
Okay. And if it can't be done, like, this is not something we're illegally, we have to do it, it just, if it can't be done, it can't be done?
Yes.
Everybody walks away, okay? Well, basically, yeah, then the only thing I have, again, it's not really a question, it's just a comment that, obviously, usually the number one step is go to petition drains. I believe I speak for a couple of the adjacent owners anyway, that that would be okay with that, because I'm questioning entering into this agreement that it would open up a can of worms to many, many of the other tile drainage that comes near our ditches. And from what I've read, the Rose Department don't owe a ditch to anyone. But I'm also curious, because the previous council had the same exact request two times and denied it. So I'm wondering what the difference was back then as to what this one is and why we would enter into this, and how we don't set a precedent to enter into this agreement again and again and again, even though we're technically not going to have to pay for anything.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Those other requests, I have no idea. I just came up today, actually, is the first time I've heard of them, so I can't comment on that.
Yeah, we didn't get a whole lot of time. So from Friday to noon until now, this is the best I could do, so. Okay, just, yeah, again, to reiterate, a petition drain would be awesome, but thank you for your time.
Deputy Mayor Williams?
If I may, Brenda, can I ask you, or councillor Noble, can I ask you a question? So I'm, I'm just confused as to why a petition for a drain is desirable over a.
Can you use your microphone, please? They can't hear.
I'm just, from my understanding, an engineer would be part of it right from the beginning, so we wouldn't have to ask any questions or do anything. Everything would be looked at, and the answers would be given, and then he would know immediately, he or she, would know immediately whether this is a possibility or not.
Go ahead. Yep.
So my next question then is to staff. You know, I'm assuming we're going to want to make sure that this is done properly so that this goes away for good, the water, that is. So how will we ensure that? Because as councillor Noble said, with a municipal drain, you know, professionals are involved right from the start. Is that going to be the case with the other option?
Go ahead, see you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely, and that's why we're doing the mutual green drain agreement. So in the agreement, you'll note that we specifically mention, you know, that we'll be able to, you know, go on the site to see the construction, to see the engineer's report that will be involved in that. So though, you know, that'll be the way that we'll ensure that it's done correctly, through the mutual drain agreement.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Massey?
Mr. Mayor, a few weeks ago or a month ago, when I was presented this proposal, I said, well, it's a no brainer, we should get into it, enter it. Then I had some feedback with the concern landowners abiding our green rule. And then it changed all my opinion because I thought like there was some concern. So but in the last three, four days, I did have answers to those concerns that I had. And but I wish, like I mentioned it to Dean too, and I'm pretty sure councillor Noble would, and most of us here, I'm pretty sure, I can't talk for everybody, but I would have preferred this process with landowners and the proponent on either side. I think it would have been a better idea if we'd sat down together and hashed it out, maybe the next time we ever do this, because then everybody can voice their concern and they can have answers to them, and, you know, just like a public meeting. I know it's not, it's just that it seemed to have brewed up. And I do remember when the, when the, the land, like when they separated the house from that land, it was proposed at the time that the water go north, that I do, yes, I do remember that very well. And then, so I did, and I did talk to the proponent that is in the, we're talking here, and there was, like, there was some mistake made in the last year or two, being the COVID year, and we didn't have all the answers from Toronto in the timely fashion that we would have, should have, should have gotten, but can't blame it at all on COVID. But the major question to me was, if do we actually own that road allowance? Now I got confirmation of that. And to me, I, I can't really go against it, as long as it's, the conditions are very, very clear that there's a drainage engineer that tells us and confirms to us that there is a fall and not an incline. And then, but that has to be, if there is a incline, then then this whole thing, it goes away then. Like, there's no, we don't, that agreement falls apart. Is that what the condition that's going to be, or is that what it says here? Like, let's say there's an incline going to that culvert?
I believe they've already confirmed that with the survey.
We have already. So certainly, through you, Mr. Mayor, there are stipulations in the contract, again, the agreement, that we will be involved in in that. So certainly, if there's an issue, we will be coming back to council to let you know that there was an issue, and certainly, the construction won't happen, because the purpose of it is to move the water.
And move water, and then I was thinking, also, then, at the, this is the better option for all of Glengarry, because there's no money going out of our pockets, so I think. And it's a simple just way, but I wish, in the beginning, we would all sat down and, like, adults, and then discuss all of this a little bit better than the next time we would see that.
Dean, you had a comment?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, part of this contract will stipulate that the engineer will be checking the elevations, the sizing, slope of it all, so your, the engineer, it'll be on their hands, like, to make sure that it's done right.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Before I call a vote, you have a request, please make it.
Could you please record the vote?
A recorded vote, okay. I'll start the recorded vote. Councillor Nay is against, obviously, yea is for what the motion is. I'll reread the motion, that the council of the township of North Glengarry directs staff to draft a mutual drain agreement and the owner of the east part of Lot 27, concession eight. So councillor Wensing, yea. Councillor Manley? Councillor Massey? Deputy Mayor Williams? Councillor Noble? Councillor Madden? And councillor McDonald, or Mayor McDonald is a yea. So motion is carried. Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, I have a motion moved by councillor Massey, seconded by councillor Noble, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives the item from the consent agenda for information purposes only. Any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Moving on to new business, the Year of the Garden proclamation. Have to put on these really nice glasses for this, so. Whereas the Year of the Garden 2022 celebrates a centennial of Canada's horticultural sector, whereas gardens and gardening contribute to the quality of life of our municipality and create safe and healthy places where people can come together. Whereas the Year of the Garden 2022 will highlight and celebrate the important contribution of gardeners, our local gardening organizations, horticultural professionals, and local horticultural businesses which contribute to garden culture and the experienced garden of our municipality. Whereas gardens and gardening have helped us face the challenges of the COVID pandemic, whereas communities of bloom, in collaboration with the Canadian Garder, Garden Council invite all municipalities, wow, celebrate the Year of the Garden. And then there, be it resolved that the township of North Glengarry hereby proclaims 2022 as the Year of the Garden in celebration of the contribution of gardens and gardening to the development of our country, our municipality, and the lives of our citizens in terms of health, quality of life, and environmental changes. And that the Saturday before Father's Day, June 18, 2022, be recognized as Garden Day in the township of North Glengarry as a legacy of Canada's Year of the Garden 2022. And that the township of North Glengarry is committed to be a garden-friendly community supporting the development of its garden culture and is proud to, encouraging the planting of gardens in a red color scheme to support the Plant Red and Show Your Canadian Garden Pride campaign throughout the township of North Glengarry in honor of the Year of the Garden 2022, and award a prize to recognize an outstanding public garden in the township of North Glengarry, such as those at schools, institutional buildings, community organizations, and museums. And that all municipalities across Canada be invited to proclaim 2022 to be the Year of the Garden in their respective municipalities, and that a copy of this resolution will be provided to the FCM and for that purpose. Any questions or comments? Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Well done, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to hear it again, actually. So well done. I just wanted to thank Anne for the work that she's done with the president of the Maxwellon District Horticultural Society to find goals that are achievable, and certainly, this was very important to a group that helps to maintain the gardens around Maxwell. So thank you for the work that you've done.
Go ahead, councillor Massey.
I prefer to plant a blue. That's okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
You can plant blue, orange, whatever color you'd like, sir. Okay, we're all in favor of that, and I will sign off on it. Okay, moving on to notice of motion, next public meeting of council is Monday, December 13, 2021, and we've come to the point of question period. Are there any questions from members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will be moving into closed business session, so we will take a five minute break. Thank you, everyone.